Hello, everybody. Hello, everyone. This is the Portola Valley Planning Commission for June 1st, 2022. I'll call the meeting to order and ask Laura to take a roll call.
Commissioner Haskell? I'm sorry. Okay, great. Got it. Commissioner Turg is expected tonight, but we don't see him yet. Vice Chair Golden?
I'm here.
Chair Coughsill?
Here.
And Craig Taylor will be absent this evening.
Okay. Great. And so first, we have oral communications, a chance for the public to address the Planning Commission on issues that are not on the agenda. So on the agenda is an amendment to the conditional use permit for Alpine Hills, and an annual housing element progress report from Laura, and then a public hearing on municipal code amendments, and then some staff reports. So if anybody from the public has something they'd like to tell us that is not one of those topics, please raise your hand now, and we cannot take action on it, but we can take your input.
Through the chair, do you want me to call them out, or would you like to?
Oh, why don't you? I'm not... Did I go away?
Nope, we've got you.
Okay, good. No, I didn't. I couldn't get my participants button to work, so why don't you go ahead?
Okay. First is Rita Comas Whitney.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. Yesterday at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting, it was suggested that a few people were being hired in planning to coordinate all the new needs of the department and the town. Can one of these new positions also be a safety officer, something that the residents have been asking for a very long time, and that's someone that could coordinate with the water company, AT&amp;T, PG&E, and other utility companies, sewer lines? Because when asked if something can be done with that yesterday, someone had said that the town doesn't take care of that particular coordination. It's just the utility companies just come in and say, and do what they want to do. But if one of these new positions could coordinate that with all the building that we have going on, and the other residents, you know, twice last month, or in April, our electricity went out, and in December, some people lost landlines for over 43 days. I was one of them. So, and with no coordination and help from the town to make all of that go away. So in one of these positions in the budget, if someone can be a safety officer to coordinate some communications to the community, and with these utility companies, that would be helpful. Thank you for listening.
Great. I have my participants list up and running now, and there are eight attendees. I don't see any other hands up. Okay, I'll close the oral communication section. Shall we move to new business? The conditional use permit amendment for Alpine Hills. Laura, do you or others have a staff report?
Through the chair. I believe I need to recuse myself from that particular discussion because I am a member of Alpine, assuming that we don't, that we have a quorum without me.
Oh, I see Nicholas now. Hi, Nicholas.
Hi, this is Nicholas. I'm so sorry to be joining you late, but this seems like an opportune time to say that I'm also a member of Alpine, and I've been recusing myself from these issues for the last couple of years.
I didn't realize that. So Laura, am I right that in this case, then we somehow decide between John or Nicholas to join us so that we have three people to review the issue?
Um, Cara, could you weigh in on this?
All right, good. Sure. Thank you, Cara Silverton, Attorney. So I think that we haven't talked about whether this particular issue does rise to the level of a formal conflict of interest. Of course, if you, you know, want to excuse yourself, you're, because of the appearance of a conflict, you're welcome to do that. But would, I guess, you know, we, we can talk about whether it is an actual conflict. The way I would analyze it would be if the granting or the denial of the conditional use permit would somehow impact the membership dues that you are paying, then it would, you know, be a, be a formal conflict of interest. If the membership, if the denial or the granting of the permit would increase amenities that were provided by the club, that could be not a financial FPPC conflict, but it could be a common law bias conflict. You know, if, if you aren't able to participate because you are so invested in receiving those particular amenities, there might be a, you know, a common law bias issue there. But I don't, you know, I, without more, I don't think that there is, you know, either one of those formal conflicts at this point. So I'd be happy to hear from, from you all as to, you know, what you were thinking in terms of the conflict.
My assumption was that, just because I was associated with it, I should recuse myself. I suppose bias would be the biggest, or perceived bias would be the biggest single issue with it. On the other hand, last time we had the issue of of Alpine, we ended up drawing straws. I think we had three members who were, who were members, sorry, three members of the Planning Commission that were also members of the club. And I think we drew straws, and I actually did end up participating in that. With respect to your questions, you know, increased membership doesn't change, wouldn't change the amenities at, at the club. I'm not sure. I can't think of, it certainly wouldn't change the dues. I don't think they're going down, so that type of thing.
But, but just to, to be clear, they're likely, if, that they're likely to go up.
Yes, that's true. That is, that is a good point. Yeah. Yeah, it certainly helps from the financial stability of the club to have more members.
Right.
So Cara, what would you like us to do? I mean, my view is the same as John, and that is one of these. You look at it, you're a member of the organization, there's some incremental benefit that is accrues or some harm that doesn't accrue, which could be viewed as a conflict. If drawing of lots is appropriate, then we should do that. But my view is that there is a conflict. I think it is kind of a, a no, so is in barnyard talk, it wouldn't be, but as a matter of lot, it is. And if you are in a position where you lose your quorum in such a circumstance, I don't know. I don't know this area well enough to, I know, I know to say, hey, council, what do I do?
Right. Exactly. So, so the problem here is that we don't draw lots. Unless it's, it's a, it's a quorum by, unless the quorum is because of the, the lack of quorum is due to the conflicts here. Craig Taylor, is he, is he a member? I assume he's not a member.
I don't know. I didn't think so, but I'm not sure.
I did not think so. Yeah.
Yeah, so he would be the third. So we don't meet, unfortunately, we don't meet the the requirement to build, to, to draw lots. So Craig could, you know, we, this could be continued, and Craig could participate at the next meeting with three members.
I don't know that there, Chair, I don't know that we have an option other than to apologize for getting folks stressed and not having a quorum.
Yeah, I'm not happy about this, that you didn't let us know that you were a member so we could count the people.
Except.
Cara, I mean, Cara's saying there's not an official conflict. But Nicholas and John, you think you should recuse yourself, or can we decide you guys could participate?
I'd be happy to participate if Cara will find that there's not a legal conflict.
Right. So Laura, what, what is the scope of the conditional use permit? I, I, is it for increased membership and increased amenities?
Just increased membership.
Okay, so the, um, it's difficult to analyze whether increased membership would have an impact on the overall dues. If you have increased membership, on the one hand, it could be spread out over more people. On the other hand, if you have increased membership, there could be additional amenities that would accrue to the club, and the membership rates then would not. Or the membership rates could go up even more. So I don't think we have enough at this point really to analyze whether there is a conflict. If so, it's a, it's a, you know, small dollar amount is my, is my sense, but I just can't analyze it off the cuff like this. I apologize.
We feel that would be a small dollar amount, and the amount would actually be speculative.
Uh, yes, it would be speculative.
I'm trying.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the only thing I can offer from my point of view is the offer to try to schedule a special Planning Commission meeting quickly so that we could move forward with this. So, you know, I don't know Craig's availability, but that is another kind of technical option that we could pursue. If we've got three commissioners, it would be available to me.
Just quickly check, and Craig is not on the membership list at Alpine.
So that, I think, is probably the best choice that we have available. Like, we don't have the, we can't analyze the conflict quickly enough to be able to go forward, but I can certainly reach out to all the parties involved, and we can try to get something rescheduled as quickly as possible in a special meeting.
Okay, and why not just put it in two weeks on the Planning Commission if Craig's here?
The Planning Commission is going to be considering the housing element in two weeks.
I see.
That's a pretty big topic. I mean, we can talk about that. You know, those are the kinds of things I usually talk about with the chair, so we can come up with those options.
Yeah, okay.
Um, okay, so through the chair, we do have a hand up, though, and that's, I mean, we might as well.
Oh, yeah, please. Yeah. Now, I'm just feel sick that we've got all these people, both in the public and the professionals, and I had double-checked the quorum, so, yeah. Very aggravating. Go ahead, Christina.
Yeah, this is Christina Poshack. I'm here as a board member for Alpine Hills. I was just gonna make the offer. If you guys do want more sort of facts about the, the question about the, the potential impact of approving or denying on membership dues, Garth Walker, who's on, or I could, I'd be happy to kind of, you know, speak to that if that's helpful.
Cara and Laura, do you think there's a chance that we could collect enough information right now to make a decision on the conflict, or that's kind of too ambitious and rushed?
It's, it's not a good practice to do this on the dais. I apologize.
Yeah, I get that. Okay. Okay, sorry, everyone. I think we're gonna take this off, or, I mean, postpone this. And thanks, Laura, for the offer to try to make a special meeting when me, Judith, and Craig are available, plus the people from presumably Alpine Hills and the staff members that worked on this are available.
Yeah, we'll do that as quickly as we can. So we'll reach out to you, just like, you know, I'll, I'll talk to the chair, and then I'll reach out too soon as we can and try to get everyone scheduled into a meeting.
Good, thank you. Okay, next is you, Laura, I guess, and Housing Element Progress Report for this year.
Going to excuse ourselves, and then let you continue with your meeting, the three of us, Christina, Elizabeth, and I.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Sorry, but yeah.
Yeah, we appreciate you trying, and we're looking forward to hearing from you, Laura. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay, for the Housing Element Annual Report. Everyone is thinking right now about the Housing Element update, but we also do an annual report to HCD for our progress for this year, the Housing Element. So that's what this report is. It's routine. Generally, we do it every year. We got a little bit off schedule and out of sync with the pandemic, but you've seen this basic report form before. So this is for the calendar year 2021. And as a reminder, the way that we count our progress towards meeting our RENA goals is through issued building permits within the calendar year. So this is net new housing units. So this year, the highlights are that we had 12 building permits that were issued for net new housing units. Eleven of those were ADUs, and one is a single-family home. So you'll remember that our RENA for the cycle is 64. We're above our RENA at 100. And then it is, there's an interesting way the recording worked in this time period. When this cycle that we're in right now, the fifth cycle, the Housing Element started, the reporting forms from HCD included 2014 because people weren't all counting the same, the eight years all the same. And then the HCD issued new reports, and those included 2015 on. And so there's this weird time period at the very beginning of our housing cycle between 2014 and 2015. So those units are included here in our totals according to the guidance that we got from HCD. So I just mentioned that because this number is pretty high, but that's because it includes kind of like an extra year at the beginning of the housing cycle. So as we're going into the process of updating the Housing Element, I just wanted to point that out in case anyone was noticing that, because I know a lot of you tracking this are really detail-oriented. So I can get more into that if people are interested, but it's just kind of like an accounting anomaly that came with their forms that they give us. So then the report goes into each of the different programs. So we just provide an update, and these programs are still, they're pretty light, you know, in the old version. So next time we do a Housing Element update for the new cycle, you'll see that there's a lot more detail that's included here. A couple of highlights that I wanted to hit on is Program 2 and the affiliated housing program. There have been conversations with the Sequoias, and they've been talking to their residents, and they have done a geologic feasibility study for that site. It's really challenging, the way that the fault goes through there and the geologic safety. But they have identified a couple of places on the property that could potentially work for additional housing, and so they're considering a project in the early stages that would include additional units for the seniors and workforce housing. So those numbers right now are being included as potential housing site for the next Housing Element update, but I wanted you to be aware of that as a update that we're providing for this year as well. Then you're very aware of all of the code updates that we've done in the Planning Commission related to ADUs. And then in terms of future housing needs, we're starting to report to them that we had the Housing on Town on Property Committee that two of our commissioners here participated in, that fed into the Housing Element update process. And then the AdHoc Housing Element Committee was appointed and has been meeting since August. So really carrying through that program of exploring future housing needs from the last Housing Element through different committees and different work, and then getting ready for the next Housing Element update. And then for transitional supportive housing, this was an ordinance code amendment that we needed to do that we're getting to now, that's on your agenda for tonight, but we're reporting that, that we're working on that now, and also reporting to them that the Willow Commons supportive housing project was developed. So we're doing that on purpose to show HCD that we didn't have the code amended yet, but it didn't get in the way of having a supportive housing project approved in the meantime. So since that went to the specialist supportive housing law, the Planning Commission didn't see that, but hopefully you've become kind of familiar with it, as we've been talking about it, and the community's been talking about it. So that's the Willow Commons supportive housing project on Alpine, two doors down from Roberts. So the attachment, I just apologize on behalf of HCD and planners everywhere in California that we have to share with you this ridiculous spreadsheet that we are not allowed to change the format. So we just tried to print PDF into pieces so you could piece it together if you wanted to. So I'm sorry, it's really an atrocious thing, but that's, that's what we have to work with. So that's my report, very straightforward. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Great. Judith, John, or Nicholas, any questions for Laura?
I, I just have one, and it appears in the atrocious schedule, and it goes to the calculation of very low, low, deed restricted, et cetera. And I'm looking for it right now, but I'm not sure I'm gonna find it. It basically is saying that the determination of low and very low is based on a statewide study, and I'm, I would just like more explanation for how, how that works at whatever level you're able to provide that. So it's on red page, fifth, I'm having trouble seeing it, might be 59, something like that.
Okay, so there's an allocation formula that we use for ADUs. And so that formula gives a percentage of how many ADUs go into each category. And so there's a couple different versions that can be used. There's one that was originally produced by 21 Elements at the beginning of the Housing Element cycle, and then the town actually adopted a slightly different version of that with our Housing Element. And then now there's a new version that's come out that we're using for the next Housing Element update. So in general, they do a bunch of big surveys and try to see how ADUs end up getting used in different communities. So our numbers are small, so the allocation kind of comes out weird, and the rounding can be weird. There's a little bit of judgment that goes into assigning them into categories because of the rounding.
So you take a reference geography, see how many are distributed among the different income categories, and then just allocate to your local community based on that wider geographic spread. Okay.
Yes, thank you.
A related question to that, in the next round, are we still gonna be using, it seems to me like we're moving beyond just allocations for planning purposes to it more actually checking to see what was actually built in the future. Is, is, are we anticipating any changes there as to how we approach this?
I think you're right in terms of the trends. So I can tell you what we're working on right now for the Housing Element update, and that is to do our projections based on an allocation, a formula again. And then, right now, we have a draft program that would say we're gonna survey people for, in terms of how they're using their ADUs, so that we would start to have data. I've talked to the other smaller towns, and we've thought, talked about doing that together because we have some similarities, and then we might have more data between us. So we might go in together with Woodside, Hillsborough, and Atherton to survey our ADU residents. So we're working through those details. Right now, the state law doesn't require us to do anything else, but I wouldn't be surprised if that changed in the next few years and, and require more accountability for ADU affordability.
Okay, um, sort of following on, I noticed in your town's progress towards meeting the goals that we had the remaining RENA number in the low-income category. And I guess I would, but we've, if you add very low and low together, we exceed it. And I'm thinking, does the state, I mean, from the standpoint of, I would think that if we got very low instead of low, that would be perfectly acceptable. But is that not the way the state looks at it, or it's just how we report it?
The state does want us to meet the goals in all the categories. Because our units are almost all ADUs, and they're allocated according to the formula, it's maybe not as meaningful as a larger city that's building deed-restricted units that are deed-restricted at different income levels. So I think that generally, people would look at our numbers and say, oh, that's a, that's a good result. That's a favorable result. A lot of ADUs have been produced, and some non-ADUs have been produced. The reason that we have the seven remaining in the low-income is just because of that allocation formula.
Gotcha. That was it.
Out of curiosity, if we didn't do the broader inclusion of the first year from 2014, do we know what that number would have been?
Uh, it would be about 10 less.
Okay, so we still did way over the prior allocation?
Yeah, I mean, maybe 12, but yeah, we're way over.
Okay. But that doesn't matter for the state, right?
Um, no, it does, it doesn't count for the next cycle, but it does help us to explain the town's efforts to try to provide more housing opportunities.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions from you, Nicholas?
How does the allocation process of ADUs employed here map onto the proposed allocation in the Housing Element? Or that we will use for this coming?
The ratio is different, and so that ratio, the reason that we have a bunch of low-income units left is because that ratio we were using is really low on low income for some reason. That made sense in the data years ago. The allocation that we're looking at now is a 30, 30, 30, 10 split. So 30% very low, 30% low, 30% moderate, 10% above moderate, 30, 30, 30, 10. So quite different numbers with a different allocation formula.
Can you, if it's appropriate, and only if it's appropriate, can you, let us know why the allocation formula is changing?
Um, well, the allocation formula we're using going forward is like the safe harbor that's put out by 21 Elements and reviewed by HCD, which has changed based on the data that's been collected for the wider region since the last Housing Element cycle, since this, since this data was collected that we're using here.
And it says, got it, says to safe harbor, so the assumption is that whether or not it's more exacting or more particular to our community, there's less risk associated with it.
Yeah, I think that's accurate. Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Great. Let's see, we'll go on to attendee, to the public questions. Is that right, Laura?
Yes.
Great. I see Dave Cardinal's hand up.
Just a second.
Thanks. Yeah, two quick questions, one of which may be inappropriate. The first one is, in terms of pipeline projects, I saw that Menlo Park, I think, gets a lot of their AD, their, their RENA numbers from pipeline projects. And just as a technical question, do we have to count the Stanford Wedge or Jim White's proposal for Willow Glens, I think it's called, as part of RENA? And that's a very short question. The other question is, And that's a very short question. The other question is, uh, I know Ladera Church is trying to. Um, build maybe ten, eleven, twelve affordable housing units. But there, some of them are wondering, have those been brought up or what's the status of those? And I don't think I've ever seen them before a committee. I'm just curious if you guys have heard about that. Thanks.
All right, through the chair, do you want me to answer those?
Oh, yeah, thanks. Oh, oh, or should we take all the questions is how we usually do it, isn't it?
Yeah, I take all the, um, public comments and then I can answer the questions.
Sounds good. Okay, next we have, um, the phone that ends seven, five, six, two.
Good evening, Caroline Bertonga. Thank you very much for, um, allowing us to comment. Um, so, um, I was comparing the reports from, from the last report in two thousand eighteen. And there was a status of program implementation at that time. I did not see that in this one and I would like to know if there is a reason. Um, now we found out that, you know, we're at a hundred. Units in cycle five and I hope you got the inventory which I have sent. It's, it's public knowledge. You can go on the government website. Um, where they show the inventory for cycle five and then you see all these cities who have built. The affordable housing and you will see how many units are empty or cannot be used. I think you should look at that. We have been asking questions why we suddenly have this increase. As you know, uh, in two thousand twelve, I believe we had a senior planner. Who was able to reduce the Rena numbers from seventy four to sixty four. I believe she used FB three sixty nine, but you know, I'm, uh, saying this top of my head. I know that I submitted this on paper after researching it, but I don't have it in front of me. So we are wondering, um, it looks like ACD constantly changes its calculation. Uh, now adding, uh, two thousand fourteen to it. Why can we not add the thirty six that we built in extra? Um, of the, um, after two thousand eighteen for cycle five to our new allocation. Um, and then. I really appreciate that the questions from the committee members because. I know we're trying to accommodate very low, um, income, uh, people. And I hope we're not going to put them where the earthquake faults are. Or where there are high fire risks. Um, I believe that was the recommendation. From Fire Chief Aneah who said, you know, the Stanford wedge is not appropriate to build a low income housing. So, yeah, um, these are my questions right now. Thank you.
Great, thanks Caroline. Let's see, I do not see any more hands up. Oh. Kristy Corley's hands up, I see. Kristy.
Yes, thank you. I'm wondering, um, why Laura, you keep saying that you need to go sixteen feet into the scenic corridor? When a plan hasn't been developed yet, at least the public hasn't seen the plan. So can you explain? The reasoning for that because it seems to me we could still, um.
Oh, yeah, Kristy, we're talking about the, this is a report on the Rena on the last Rena cycle. And Laura has given us a report on the two thousand twenty one numbers. So we're taking comments on that.
Will I be able to ans- ask this question later?
You know, it'd be great if you could ask it at a housing element meeting where we're discussing those. Um, right now, we, when we're on this agenda, we take comments that are pertaining to those subjects that we're talking about. So we don't have that topic on our agenda. So I think it'd really be best if you wait. And come to a, the next housing element meeting and ask it there.
Okay, just one, I'll get to the Rena allocations then. So for thirty, thirty, thirty and ten. Can those be allocated differently and has our planning department, uh, chosen those on their own?
Okay, thanks. Uh, let's see, I see Peter Drager's hand up.
Yes.
Very good, okay. Uh, just had a quick, a couple of quick questions of Laura regarding the. The ADUs in the last cycle. I'm wondering if, uh, first of all, I, it's my understanding that, that an ADU might have been approved. Uh, but not built and that would still be counted. Is that correct? That would still be counted in that cycle? Just a quick question.
All the questions at the end, so go ahead.
Okay, okay, let me, let me. I'm just wondering if we know how many ADU. Uh, were investigated but not, not acted on, for instance, uh, during the cycle. Uh, or whether, um, uh, applications for permits might have been withdrawn. You know, how, how many, uh, what, what the record would be on that? And then also, uh, do we have any anecdotal evidence or, or stronger, uh, evidence? Of ADUs that might have been built. Uh, but, uh, there were roadblocks of one kind or another, uh, that could be documented. Where, uh, the potential applicant or applicant, uh, did not follow through for, for those particular reasons. Just, just curious that, you know, is there any written documentation that might support? Um, uh, a, uh, an idea of, uh, folks building ADUs. Uh, if there was some kind of support for them to do, do so. Uh, whereas without support, they couldn't do it or wouldn't do it.
Great, thanks, Peter. Okay, now I see no more hands, so we'll wrap up the, um. Public comments on this topic. And then Laura, I guess if you have answers to some of those, it would be great if you. Give those.
Um, yeah, there's a question about, these are more focused through the housing element committee. Um, but just in case, um, uh, there's a question about pipeline projects. And Stanford and Willow Commons are included in the pipeline projects as it's drafted right now. Um, Ladera Church is also included, um, at this time. In the draft housing element that we're working on. Um. There was questions about, uh, the reduction in Rena in two thousand twelve. So in the last housing element cycle, there was an opportunity to work collaboratively between the cities and towns and kind of swap the units. Um, and so that's how the unit count got reduced in Portola Valley in the past. That's no longer possible, um, the way that the state law changed and the way that they changed the way that they form regions. So our region, our county elected not to do that. And I can tell you, I sat in the meeting with the other planning directors and they all said, we are not taking your units this time around. Um, they made that very clear and the larger cities elected not to participate, so we did not have that opportunity. Um, there's a question about why we can't use the units that we have now over arena for the next calculation. Um, and the answer is we're just not allowed to. Um, that's the rules. I don't know if it makes a lot of sense personally. Um, but that's just how it works. Um, in terms of the allocation and the question of can it be different or can it be chosen by staff? Um, it can be adjusted. Um, I think it's reasonable to say that staff could adjust it, you know, with the knowledge of the planning commission and the council. Um, I don't think, um, in a town like this would be appropriate for staff to change it, you know, without discussion around it. But with discussion, it can be changed in the middle of the cycle. We have gone, um, in, in generally we've used the allocation formulas. It's in our adopted housing element because we felt like that was appropriate and it was approved by HCD. And then talking about ADUs that were approved but not built and how do we keep track or is there a record of them? Um, yes, there is technically a record of everything that people have applied for and not gone forward with. Um, because we know what all the application numbers are. Um, and are, we have a big Excel spreadsheet of all of the ADUs. Um, and so you can look at it pretty easily and see, um, if, if permits haven't been issued. Um, there's very few that don't go forward. Um, so I mean, I, I would, I haven't looked at the spreadsheet for a couple of weeks. But you know, it's only something like maybe one or two per year if I had to just estimate. Um, for the purposes of this discussion. So we do know if they're withdrawn, we do know if people, um, apply for them and then don't pursue them, but it's pretty unusual. The most common time we see that, I would say, is if people are doing ADUs with a larger project and then that larger project changes. Um, that might sometimes happen because most, a lot of new houses these days have an ADU along with the project. So sometimes there's a shift in that way, but it's not too common that people apply for an ADU. Um, and are already have all their plans and materials to go through the process and then don't build it. The only explanation I can think of for the few people that don't is they might not realize how expensive it's going to be. Um, we hear from a lot of people like order of magnitude to build an ADU in town of medium size. You know, is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars up to nine hundred thousand dollars or I've even heard a million dollars. Um, to build an ADU in certain circumstances because of the site conditions, topography. Um, geology, um, all of those types of conditions that come into play and then just the cost of construction. So people don't go forward, I suspect that that, um, is the reason why, if they have their approval and don't, um, physically build it. So in terms of counting for arena, we keep track if we have like a planning approval that's issued for an ADU, we report that. But what counts towards Rena are the building permits. Um, it's a pretty rare for people to pull a building permit and not finish construction. Uh, I think that's all the questions I can answer.
Okay, great, thanks Laura. Uh, you don't need any action or vote or anything from us on this, right, or?
Um, no, just if you have any feedback, um, that you think we should integrate, um, before we present it to council next week.
I don't have any feedback.
No, okay. Great, thanks. Okay, we'll go on to item number three, the municipal code amendments.
Um, so the presentation for this is going to be given by Jake Garcia, our consultant planner. Um, and then Cara is here as well, as always for code amendments, it was collaborative effort. Um, between our teams, so I will hand it over to Jake for the presentation.
And we have fourteen attendees, if people.
Great, thank you.
Great, uh, thank you and good evening, planning commissioners. Uh, I am Jake Garcia and I'm a consultant planner for the town. The item before you tonight is for a recommendation to town council regarding amendments to the zoning code to comply with the state law. Uh, state laws regarding supportive and transitional housing. Before jumping into the presentation, um, please note that staff. Oh, yes.
I think you've got your wrong screen. We're not seeing your PowerPoint, we're seeing your notes.
Oh, great. My bad, thank you.
It's just that it's the two screens, when you're working on two screens, it's always tricky.
Can you see?
There we go.
PowerPoint now.
That looks great.
Okay, I will start, um, from the beginning of them. The item before you tonight is for a recommendation to the town council. Regarding amendments to the zoning code, uh, to comply with state law, uh, regarding supportive and transitional housing. Uh, before jumping into this presentation, uh, I would like to note that staff has identified a mistake in the draft ordinance for this item. Uh, in the planning commission packet. So on page seventy two, uh, that's red page seventy two, the phrase six or fewer houses, uh, persons. Is shown in red text, it should have been crossed out and we have updated the packet online to reflect the change. Um, and then jumping into the background for the amendments here. Um, the purpose of the proposed zoning amendments is to update the town's municipal code to comply with the state law. Uh, program eight of the town's current housing element includes a goal to amend the town zoning ordinance to fully comply with state laws. Relative to transitional and supportive housing. The proposed zoning code amendment would allow the town's code to comply with Senate Bill two and Assembly Bill two one six two. Uh, AB, um, yeah, two and six two. In short, uh, these amendments would implement the last remaining program in the current housing element and bring the zoning code into compliance with state law. Um, so, um, complying with SB two. Uh, for starters, the proposed zoning ordinance amendments would update the relevant definitions to comply with state law definitions. Currently, the town has its own definition of supportive housing and transitional housing, as you'll see in the staff report. And the proposed amendments would revise definitions to align with, uh, align with the state law definition. Uh, SB two amended both California's housing element law and its Housing Accountability Act. And requires local governments to take specific actions to encourage the development of supportive and transitional housing. As relevant to the proposed zoning code amendments presented within, um, th- this presentation here. SB two's amendments require jurisdictions to treat, uh, supportive and transi- transitional housing like other types of permitted residential uses in a zone. Currently, the town has occupancy standards on, um. On transitional supportive housings of six or fewer persons. However, the town does not have occupancy standards in the single family residential zones. Therefore, the town must amend its zoning code to remove the six or fewer persons limitation for both supportive and transitional housing in its three. Single family residential zones to comply with state law. Uh, complying with AB two and six two, uh, AB two and six two took effect and amended the housing element law to. Require the supportive housing via permitted by right use in zones where multifamily mixed use developments are permitted. This may include non-residential zones that permit multifamily uses. Albeit, the proposed supportive housing must satisfy certain requirements to qualify as a, uh, use by right. Yeah, AB two one six two further updated the requirements of SB two. Under which previously the town could require discretionary permits for supportive and transitional housing if other residential units required such permits. To comply, uh, the town must include language in its zoning code that indicates that supportive housing is permitted by right use in zones or multifamily mixed use development are permitted. And this includes any non-residential zones where multifamily uses are permitted. Currently, the multifamily housing is only permitted as part of a planned unit development associated with an affiliated housing project as described in the housing element. The zoning's code, the zoning codes proposed amendment would be updated to clarify that a residential PUD is not required for a supportive housing project. And by updating the zoning code for SB two and removing the language of six or fewer persons in single family zones. Uh, the changes would effectively address the mixed use zones that permit residential uses. Including the town's administrative professional and planned community districts to allow for supportive housing as a permitted by right use. Um. Proposed zoning ordinance amendments also include the cleanup of existing errors as it didn't. Identified by staff and they're noted with, uh, within the ordinance as a attachment. Excuse me, as exhibit A to attachment one of the staff report. Um, and a public notice was sent out, um, or was published to the Almanac on May twentieth. And no public comments have been received to date regarding this item. Staff recommends that the planning commission review the proposed zoning code amendments and adopt a resolution recommending the town council approve the ordinance. Uh, that and staff's presentation, the town attorney and planning staff are available for any questions from the planning commission. Thank you.
Great, thanks Jake. Judith, John or Nicholas, you want to start asking questions? Go ahead, Nicholas.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much, uh, for the, uh, presentation, Mr. Garcia. I'm not sure that I completely follow the need to. To modify, uh, the PUD, I, limitation. Is that a modification that would be required as a result of the? Statute or is that to affect the, you know, broader goals that are consistent with the house?
Uh. Uh, perhaps, uh, the town attorney would want to point on this further, um, but from my understanding, this would bring all of the, uh, town zoning ordinance to comply with state law. Um, so this is one area where the or town's ordinance does not clearly, um, comply with state law. And this would effectively, um, align it so that it will.
Yeah, if I could just elaborate a, a, um, a bit on that, so, um. The second law, we have two different laws that we are, um, uh, complying with here. The second law, AB. The second law, AB Two One Six Two. Said that supportive housing projects may not be subject to discretionary review. They're only entitled to ministerial review. And so because the PUD really is a discretionary type of permit. We can no longer require a PUD for supportive housing projects. Similarly, we can't require a conditional use permit or, you know, other discretionary permit. They are a permitted by right use.
So they're permitted by right under.
State law.
State, state law. In, in all cases?
So they, they need to comply with objective standards for the underlying zone. And so if in, we have, you know, in the single family zones, they would. They would comply with, you know, the height and, and et cetera of the single family zone. And we don't currently have a multifamily zone in Portola Valley. And so it's likely that as a result of the housing element process, we will have a multifamily zone. And in that case, the intent would be to provide objective standards for. Projects that are not subject to discretionary review.
So, but at this point in time, there'd be no obligation to this. It wouldn't be necessary to make the modification because there is no multifamily. We're doing this proactively in anticipation of a change of the zoning code.
Correct.
Is it important to do this before we actually have the modification to the zoning code? Or would this be treated typically as a cleanup kind of action after the modification has been made?
Six half dozen the other, we thought it would be easier to do it at this point while we're focusing on this. And it came to our attention that, you know, there was a specific reference to. The need for a PUD specifically for supportive housing projects. And so if, you know, HCD were to be. Just, you know, perusing our, our general zoning code, that would certainly be a red flag. It's, it's no longer an enforceable provision. Even though we don't technically have a multifamily zone.
So it sounds like this is more forward looking. And we're also, there's some other cleanup kinds of things that should be done. For example, conforming definitions, but the, but the other is a. It is, is a straight up forward looking, not presently required. But as soon as, assuming that the housing element does go forward. It would be included as part of the package.
Correct.
That's helpful, thank you.
John, John, go ahead.
Are we anticipating any real world consequences of these changes?
No, I don't think so. I mean, the state law preempts us in many cases. This is about longstanding effort that HCD encourages all the cities and towns. To actually have their code be consistent with state law. And not go through that process of having to, you know, communicate with an applicant and talk about how your local ordinance is superseded. And avoid those kinds of, you know, that kind of process or that kind of uncertainty.
Right, so I guess another way to say it is, the state law, all we're doing is putting in paper what already applies.
Yeah, I think that's accurate, yeah.
Whether we change our code or not, it already applies, so let's just clean it up. Okay.
Yeah, and there's, you know, this commission is very aware that there's places that have interpretation. There's places that we can use creativity to address local issues. This code amendment, you know, in staff's opinion is quite straightforward, it doesn't need that kind of special treatment that we give to some state laws.
Any more, John?
Nope, that's it.
How about you Judith?
Yeah. It seems to me that the outcome of the proposed edits. I, I think is one unintended ramification. Is it now the only thing that we're restricting to six or fewer is residential care? And, you know, I, I understand that's a separate issue. From what we're narrowly focused on today to bring into conformance for supportive and transitional housing. So I guess it's more of an observation than a question that. You know, as things move forward with this portion of the code. It may be helpful unless Laura, you view it differently to, to assess the implications of now. Treating residential care facilities differently. I don't want to get caught up in something that's not really before us. But it's, if you have any comments to that observation, I'd appreciate it.
Cara, see if you remember this differently, but the way that I remember the evolution of the state laws. These are separate categories that were regulated by different laws. And residential care facilities still has a state law provision where six is a meaningful cutoff. So residential care facilities are defined by the number of people who live there in six is meaningful in that law. In supportive and transitional housing, that six threshold is no longer meaningful. That's why we're taking it out.
Okay, thank you.
Great. I don't have any additional questions besides the ones my colleagues had. We'll move on to public comments. Let's see, David Cardinal?
That's an old hand, sorry.
Oh, it's an old hand, good. Okay, maybe that's true of everybody. How about you Christie? Do you have something that relates specifically to the, these code amendments?
Yeah, I was just wondering if you could list everything in SB Two and the other law that might affect our town. I know you're calling it cleanup, but by right means that. Developer by right, that means he could automatically get it. And I guess going anything above six people per resident would allow. I guess what is the limit would be my question, if it's above six, what's the max? And then. Giving more detail on each of these would be helpful. I thought it was pretty general.
Okay, next, Rita Combs, Whitney?
Hi, thank you. Someone mentioned that this was advertised in the almanac. You know, there's not a whole lot of copies of the almanac in, and you have to pay for a subscription. But I receive a lot of the messages from the town on the different meetings. And I just, I just don't remember this one being so specific that this particular item was going to be up. Similar to what would have been an advertisement. And so I'm wondering about, you know, in picking the almanac as the way to message. The, the members of the community, were other avenues explored? To, to alert the, you know, the voting members of the community? That this meeting was going to be working on these particular issues? Thank you. Besides sending out the packet.
And last, we have Bob Schultz.
Hi, thank you. Good evening commissioners. I think many Nathor's Triangle residents are concerned that the vacant Nathor's Lot C on four three nine four Alpine Road. Is now proposed to be upzoned to 20 units an acre. Previously, the housing committee had expressed concern about adding too much density on that horse. And that this 20 unit per acre instead of zoning, instead of six would be considered only a backup plan. Now suddenly it's a primary focus. This would increase the high density housing in that horse by almost 50% over the six unit per acre plan and potentially much more if.
Sorry to interrupt, but we're taking comments right now on the agenda item three where we're looking at these municipal code amendments?
Yeah, Chair, I'm, I'm, if you, I, I have, I'm getting there, I just, there's kind of a bit of link. Sorry. But, but, but basically, there could be even more units there if low income bonus density is used. So from what we discussed or has been discussed tonight, my understanding is that Portola Valley's current definition of the supporting housing will be expanded to use the state definition. And these supporting housing, supportive housing projects would require a target audience population to include, include. And I'm quoting here, individuals or families experiencing chronic homelessness, homeless youth. Individuals exiting institutional settings, including but not limited to jails, hospitals, prisons. And institutes of mental disease who were homeless when entering into the institute and blah, blah, blah. Putting these concerns together, I understand the town has already contacted the lot C owner on Alpine regarding upzoning the. To and requesting to 20 units per acre. I'm wondering, do we know what type of project is being planned? Could, could you please elaborate on how these supportive housing changes might play out here, if at all? Thanks.
Thanks Bob. Okay, I think that's all the public comments, so we'll turn it over to you Laura, if you have answers to some of these.
There's a question about everything in SB Two and what would affect the town. I mean, I, I, we didn't analyze every aspect of it for the planning commission, we're presenting the things that are not consistent with our code for amendment. So it's not a detailed analysis of that law. You know, the law can be found, we can answer specific questions if the residents have them. But, you know, we're not anticipating other effects that we need to address away. What is the limit or what's the max? If I'm understanding this question correctly, the limits would be left to the town's objective design standards. So as part, we don't have very many objective design standards now, we do have some. We have height, we have setback, we have those types of objective design standards. We'll have more objective design standards for future multifamily or mixed use districts. As they're created with the housing element update. So that will be something the town will be working on to add more objective standards and that will really create the limit. It'll likely be, you can think of it, we call it in planning, a form based code. Where you limit the size of the building through those objective standards, you kind of create the building envelope. And then how much can fit in that building envelope while meeting all of the other requirements, parking, landscaping, those types of things. Is what is allowed to fit on the site. There's a question about how we got the word out and use of the almanac, using the almanac as the standard practice. Generally speaking, the state law has requirements that have us post in a newspaper of general. I think is the language. Cara, collaborate if necessary.
Busted somebody else earlier.
Oh, okay, that's my fault, I didn't.
Okay, thanks, okay.
Bob, out of the. Sorry about that, everyone. So the standard practice of the town is to use the almanac, so that's where we publish our publications that are required under state law. So this is a code amendment that affects the town, so that's where we publish it. And then everyone who signs up for a planning commission notification gets notified of these meetings. So that's the process that we use to notify people and in addition to the normal agenda posting. And then I wasn't totally clear on the last section or like. How, how to respond to that, I think. There are concerns related to, you know, the housing element update and how these two things come together. The housing element update in this code amendment. I don't think that this code amendment changes anything from a practical point of view since these state laws are in effect. So I'm not, I can't think of any other implications when we put those two things together beyond what people have already talked about. And the state law does require us to allow housing for certain populations that have been underserved. And that is the point of the legislation. Is to make sure that all cities and towns have areas zoned that allow supportive housing, transitional housing. That, that's really the point of the law.
And can I add Laura, is it true, or I think this is true because I'm on the housing element also. If we as a town got to the number we're aiming for, the, the three oh four, which includes a buffer. And let's say we did not use any sites near Nat Horse. But then of. Somebody could buy those properties and propose these units under these state laws and they would automatically get approval. And it wouldn't matter that, oh now we're well over the three oh four, right? It seems like if these are going to happen, it would be nice to get them counted in our three oh four.
Yeah, I mean, if, you know, it's possible because we don't know what the market is going to do. And we don't know how individual property owners are going to respond. Right, right, so we're planning for the target number, then we add the buffer because usually if anything, it goes the other direction. You know, it's occasionally communities far outperform their arena, but it's not that common that communities outperform it. We outperformed ours because ours was so low. And as mentioned by the resident, ours was negotiated down when that was still an option. So it's possible that we would outperform the arena, but those are variables we can't, you know, anticipate.
Okay, thanks. So now back to discussion from the commission. And am I right Laura, we're aiming towards either approving or amending this resolution on red page sixty seven. To send on to the town council.
Yep, the, the recommendation is the adoption of the resolution with any changes that you might think are necessary.
Okay, good. So discussion, anybody want to go first?
I'm happy with it as is.
So I remain concerned about the, doing something that's not immediately before us. I'm happy with it generally as corrected in the second circulated version with the line out in the right place. But the reference to the PUD, I'm still not following why we are doing that now if it's really anticipatory. While I expect it. Once the discussion about zoning happens within the town. I, I think it's, if that moves forward, is part and parcel of that discussion. And I think probably going to be needed, but it's not before us today. So that's the one piece I'm, I'm not at this point supportive of.
Nicholas?
I agree. It feels though we have a direction that we're taking both here to comply with. State law, of course, comply with state law and it provides better control for the town. We have another piece of this, as Judith called out. That anticipates modifications, but we're not there yet. And I think that's very typical to adopt a modification to a general plan of whatever the nature may be. Including a housing element and then to have a cleanup process in which you conform your. With whatever modifications. There may be, and I'm confident that there will be other. Aspects of the. The housing code, not effectively other portions of. The town code that will need to be modified. But I think that there's some efficiency virtues that the planning director and town council. Called out in, said, well, while we're here, we might as well just go and clean it up. And there is some some virtue in that. I think that I would rather treat the PUD issue as a downstream issue. As part of the cleanup that will follow. Once the housing element is adopted.
So so are we specifically saying on red page seventy one? Under the multifamily of portable housing, just to strike the last line in red?
Residential plan unit development is not required for supportive housing project. That's, I believe, the sentence unless there's other areas.
Which is true regardless, right? I mean, it's under state law level. That's already a true statement. It's just a question of whether or not we refer to it. Correct?
That's correct. It really is. It's just a clarification. So and if a project came in in a multifamily zoning district, if we do have one, we we wouldn't require a PUD because we're preempted. From requiring it. So it's mainly a clarification. One thing that that also influenced our our decision, and I forgot to mention is that with the Willow Commons project, there was some discussion about whether a PUD would be required. And whether the Willow Commons project would be considered a multifamily project. The there are two, two. It's areas where supportive housing is required, number one, in in multifamily districts, but also in mixed use districts that permit housing. And so just as as a staff, we did have to look at. And and by the way, that's that was the second, that was the trigger for the Willow Commons project. So it's really a clarification issue that that we wanted resolved because of the Willow Commons issue. But it's again, as I as I mentioned, six half dozen the other, it's not legally necessary at this point.
I see Judith and Nicholas, though, why not do it? I mean, I do like things. More consistent and I do feel like it's aggravating to residents to. Come in and talk to the planning staff and have to get the story that like, well, we've got our local rules, but well, don't read those too close because you really got to go read all these state rules. Put those on top of this. It feels. Much better to me to have documents that have somebody that knows what they're doing has already unified them.
Yes, I see it as we don't have any inconsistency with respect to the multifamily. In Portola Valley because we don't have any multifamily. Valley with. Some kind of unusual. Exceptions that I don't think apply or that aren't addressed by by this provision. So it's not an issue. That we have an inconsistency. Or that we are relying on state law in some way. But rather, we have a. This there ain't nothing in that box. Right now and until there is until there is a multifamily zoning. I don't know why it it feels as though we would be introducing. At best confusion. At this at this point in time rather than clarification and if we waited. Downstream. Then. You know, it may become relevant, but I think it may actually result in a change in the zoning code. With respect to. PUDs and it may change the. The way in which PUDs are treated with respect to. Certain species of multifamily housing and. Not sure that we need to do, in fact, I don't see that we need to do that at this point, and I don't see that it resolves an issue that's presently before us. But, you know, in general. I think you know that my view is that more town control and clarification and making things more straightforward. Is uniformly better at this point. I don't see, I don't see that this is. An area that needs to be clarified because. Because it's we because we don't have the type of zoning that would trigger this issue.
Um, through the chair, I actually want to amend my previous position on this a little bit now that I'm rereading. And thinking it through some more, we do allow multifamily affordable housing at affiliated housing sites.
That's right.
So and this is a reference to the affiliated housing program of the general plan. So I I think it's highly unlikely that an affiliated housing provider would build a. Supportive housing project. But I think legally they would have the right to. So I think.
I don't I don't disagree with anything you said. If we wanted to narrow it to affiliate housing projects. I mean, I think that makes sense and that that's the limited. That's that's the limited exception that I was kind of calling out. But I don't see that we would need to go and disturb.
Yeah, the. And and I defer to the legal experts on, you know. Do we have to do this right now? What I am also responding to. Is, you know, you did hear some of the public comments that the the rezoning is a sensitive issue. I think on principle, I don't like doing things we don't have to do right now. Efficiency is great, but. I haven't had a chance to look through the rest of the housing element or general plan. To see every instance where a PUD. Is referenced and to really fully understand it. So to me, that's getting out beyond what we were trying to do today, and I do think. Once the rezoning. Discussion happens, any cleanup will be automatic and they've already got the language in part. So I don't, I just think that it is not necessary today. That people will want a fulsome discussion of the implications. And I would, I would think that's an appropriate thing to do before we just clean it up. In the, you know, for efficiency now, I think. People are going to care and should have a discussion. Although I don't anticipate it being a big deal, exactly how it's implemented, exactly the wording. I'm not prepared to. Say, yeah, I I get that. I know exactly what it's doing and I do or don't support that. So I I just think it's premature.
Would you guys be okay if we just strike that one line?
That that would be. I believe my. I'm comfortable with the rest of it.
And let me understand exactly which line this is on red page seventy one. Under letter, capital letter I. That sentence.
Yep, the residential planned unit development is not required for supportive housing project. I mean, I did think that supportive housing was covered under a different. Provision than affiliated. So, you know, the more we're getting into it, the more I'm realizing I don't feel. Like I know what we're doing if we adopt that.
I think this fair. I mean, it's one of these things that would require some fancy sewing, which we probably don't want to do. Real time and we can. Handle the unlikely event of multifamily. Supportive housing in an affiliated housing area. As a. Recognizing that. That's not completely clean right now, but I I agree and you know, planning director is correct that that's an issue. I'm not sure there's an issue that's addressed here. And trying to trying to fix it on the fly seems. Harder than. That merits at the moment as I I don't think we can do it well.
Good, so. Reasonable if we make amend this. Men, let me get to the beginning, the. Amend this ordinance to be what you have written with the change on red page seventy one, letter I.
Yes, to just delete that sentence, a residential plan unit development sentence.
Yeah.
Does it? That makes it a cleanups modification. I have no problem with that. I I don't I don't know. I don't know where my sister is, but I don't have a problem.
I'm fine with that.
So we'll keep the the. Code. Correction in. So change two, four, eight, two to two, four, eight, one. That was just something that we noticed. Was an incorrect citation, but delete the the red page, the red sentence.
Good point, yes.
And we'll need to clean, come back and do the cleanup, the the planning director. Called out both with the. Multifamily.
The affiliated.
So, you know, thank you.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
You very appreciate it and the and the PUD and. That sounds like something we can do in default presumably or. Q one or two of twenty twenty three.
So. How about I move that we approve? The proposed changes in our ordinance in support of the state housing laws with the removal of that one sentence.
Well said. I second it.
Okay, any more discussion on this one? Let's move to a vote. All can we just do all in favor or?
Well, I know we need a, we need a roll call vote.
Yeah, and is it that we're approving it or we're approving it to be recommended to the town council? What is the?
Formally, you are adopting a resolution recommending approval of the ordinance. As drafted with the change that we just discussed.
Okay.
Um, okay, so we had the motion in the second, so the roll call commissioner Tark. Commissioner Haskell.
Aye.
Vice Chair Golden.
Aye.
Sarah Koffsel.
Aye. Great. Great, thanks, everyone. I will go to number, oh, it looks like three here, but let's call it four. Commission, Commissioner reports. Anybody have anything?
Oh, I guess the last ASCC meeting I was at was interesting in that. The two projects that came up. In terms of what how the site would be laid out. Basically hinged on our current code around the fire engine access. And the need to have a particular slope and the hammerhead. And I just thought it was fascinating that that literally drove what was going to happen on those properties, you know, from from there forward. I was like. Having some pretty significant impact with our with our fire code these days, so.
Good. Judith or Nicholas, anything to report?
Nothing here.
Not me, because I see that Laura will give an update on the housing element. So staff reports.
Okay, so I'm just gonna talk a little bit about the housing element from the staff point of view. And then if either of the commissioners that are serving want to add, that would be great from your perspective. So some important milestones have been happening in the last six to eight weeks, a lot of progress. There was a public meeting on May ninth, which was well attended, a little over a hundred attendees. There was a presentation by staff consultants and then there was breakout rooms where we asked questions and got feedback. That feedback was related a lot to the site inventory, so the sites for housing as well as ADUs. So we got quite a bit of good feedback around those areas and the housing element committee had been considering a program that we've been calling the Opt-In Program. And we got quite a bit of feedback around that. That was one of the reasons it resulted in a different outcome from that community feedback. Then there was also a committee of committees meeting. And this really turned out to be a great success, in my opinion. So just as a reminder, we offered all of the town committees to be able to join this committee of committees with one or two members per committee. Mostly it's the chairs or vice chairs or sometimes an appointee. And then we've gotten together, given a little presentation and an update and then received feedback from that group. And then that's being chaired by Judy Murphy from Conservation. And then she reports back into the Housing Element Committee. On the results of that meeting. So that system has been working really well. And I think something that we can emulate for future projects and programs. I think it's been a great way to coordinate. Across the different committees. So a lot of that feedback that we got at the last committee of committee meetings will actually probably be implemented in the next step. We're talking about more specific zoning standards and objective standards. So some of that will be coming to the planning commission later and using your expertise in those areas. So we'll really try to capture those comments that we got from the committee of committees and make sure that's all transmitted to you. When it's your turn to to take a look at those materials. So really great level of citizen participation and we still have our e notification system for this. Is right about four hundred and fifty residents. So an incredible percentage of the town is receiving regular updates on the housing element process. So in terms of what's coming next, the Housing Element Committee reviewed, we call it a partial draft. It was four of the sections of the housing element at their last meeting. Made some revisions, gave staff some additional direction. And we are working on drafting the full draft housing element right now. And so that's going to be released out to the public in the next week or so, taking that feedback we got and kind of bringing that all together. Then we have a series of meetings that are coming up in the month of June. We'll have June fifteenth, Planning Commission, discussion of the housing element. Then June twentieth, the ad hoc committee will review the full draft. Then on June twenty ninth, there's going to be a special town council meeting. And then we'll bring all of those comments together and finalize the draft version that we're going to send off to HCD. So there's going to be a thirty day comment period for the public. This is something new that's added in housing element law this time around. So there there'll be kind of an open comment period time. We also told all of the committees at the committee of committee meetings if they wanted to have meetings during that same time period, which is kind of basically the month of June. You know, or kind of the first, you know, it'll be out in about a week or so, kind of that month period. If they want to talk about the housing element, they're welcome to. So it'll be released widely. You'll all get an email when it's published so that you can start reading it and looking at it. It'll come out before your pocket. So that you've got some time to spend with it. So that's a big month of June, basically for the housing element process. And then it'll get sent off to HCD for their three month review. So that's the update on the housing element, and I think I'll pause there and I'll talk about the safety element in a minute because I don't know if our commissioners are serving have anything that they wanted to.
No, that was a good summary. Can I just ask what? When it comes to the planning commission on June fifteenth. You'll be looking for feedback. We don't take a vote or approve it or send it off to the council.
Uh, you do send it on to the council, so you're making any recommendations. And then giving feedback that would, you know, go forward to the council for their consideration, like you would for kind of for any policy document.
I see, yeah. Because that's going to be tough. Nicholas and I, you know, are heavily involved in the housing commission because committee because we're on the committee. But I feel like it'll be tough for the other three commissioners to. I mean, of course, they can read it and digest it, but. You know, to the extent there's things that need discussion or revision, it'll be hard to do in one planning commission meeting.
Yeah, and thank you. You took the words out of my mouth.
It will. So. I mean, that's something that we we can talk about doing it over two meetings. We would just need to do kind of like two planning commission meetings back to back if you want to do that. Kind of time them closely together so we can have a continuation of the conversation. I'm certainly open to doing that. We just need to get the housing element off to HCD as early in July as we possibly can.
Yeah, I, you know, I have been listening to a goodly portion. Yeah, I, you know, I have been listening to a goodly portion of those meetings, but. You guys have put in so much time, like dozens of hours, and I've put in maybe a dozen hours. And I don't really feel like I've been able to keep up. So I am concerned about one meeting. Being enough um myself, uh my other, you know, John might be a a quicker study than me and and um. Uh Craig as well, but but I do have a concern there.
Just FYI, I am I am not here on the fifteenth. So I am out through the twenty second.
So this may be, um, I can have a follow-up conversation with the chair. Um, so maybe we can have a conversation about what the options are. Um, and how to structure the meeting so that we get the most out of it for the commissioners and for the public. Um, we can think about that. There's certain aspects of the housing element that are very routine. Um, probably want to focus on the major policy points.
Yeah.
Um, and it's a big document and there's a lot in there that's just required by state law and might not be as meaningful um to people. So I think maybe we can really think about that, have the most out of the time and whether we want to schedule um to two meetings to discuss it. And it's important to, the way I'm thinking about this, really, this is the first draft. So we need to get something out to H C D and to get their response to our our basic approach, like our housing sites, our programs. Is that coming together um for them? Because we do expect to do revisions in the fall. Um, now, we don't want to, we don't want to end up with all the work to be done in the fall. Do you know what I mean? Kind of, we want to get the housing element as clean as we can and and build as much um community consensus and solve as many problems as we can. But it's, this is not our only crack at it. We will have to come back and do some revisions in the fall after we have H C D comments.
Uh, th- those are all good points. Um. I think the later we have. A full understanding, for me only, the later I have my full understanding. The less likely it's going to be taken into consideration. So there there's a balance there. I know we'll get it, get to refine it, but. This is several of ours first review of it. So I I appreciate you have a lot to balance. I trust you and Anne to have a discussion and. And take into consideration those concerns.
Great.
So I guess I I do have a a couple of comments on this and they're basically process comments. That is, I don't recall that I've ever seen the level or the percent. Community engagement around anything, maybe ever. That we've seen around the housing element, and I think that speaks, one, to the importance of the issue. Uh, and it also speaks to people's value of the very special town that we live in. Uh, but we've had upwards of what, a hundred and seventy people-ish? Uh, on uh on various uh meetings. For a town that has a total population about forty-three hundred. That's pretty astonishing. When you, when you think about maybe half of those, a little bit less are are kids uh-ish. Uh, you know, you 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 start getting into real percentages of of the town. It's like the closest thing you've seen to direct. Uh democracy or participation uh from, except if you're in a little New England town someplace. Uh, and the other thing that I think that we've seen is it's not just the participation, but it's the engagement and the level of engagement. Uh, the level of thought, uh the heartfelt emotion. Um, and the real intellectual rigor with which people have been engaging. And I and certainly not to celebrate ourselves, but to celebrate staff. Uh, for having done a pretty remarkable pivot. Uh, as a result of what we've heard from uh from the town and the direction. Uh, which was really markedly different than the direction uh that we'd been thinking about going in. And the very clear message and there is a very strong, very swift uh turnaround. You know, and I and I think about this. And one is, you know, nice job. Uh, but I also think about this in the, or YouTube. Uh, in the context of uh of the other one versus two meetings or however many meetings that requires. That is, it is going to, it is going to receive a lot of attention, should receive a lot of attention. And this is probably one of these challenging moments when we're going to go slow for a moment. To go fast later on, because it would be a shame trying to do a pivot. Uh, uh, in uh in September uh or um. Or October. And we've given such attention to engagement. That this is probably the right moment to really dig into that. And uh now, I hate to say it, I'm not looking for another, but likely to be very long meeting. Uh, but uh. I think it's kind of what we're signing up for uh to make this work. Anyway, that's my observations from a process standpoint. Uh, as to where we've been, nice job. Uh, and uh my thoughts on the process and. Planning Director and uh Chair Koffsel, I know that you guys will do the right thing. Uh, but I wanted to weigh in in light of what the experience has been today.
Uh, could I some, you you're in favor of more more meetings rather than one meeting? Is that right?
Yeah, you know, it's, you know, I kind of, I the I I I I hate to be the guy who's signing up for, yeah, I want more meat. But uh in in this case, yeah, I think you do want more meeting uh rather than less meeting.
Okay.
Or maybe I want more effective meeting uh rather than uh than 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 the single meeting.
Okay, thanks. All right, Laura, I guess we'll go on to safety element now.
Yeah. Um, okay, so on the safety element. Um, the staff and consultant team prepared um some memos. That um represent kind of our early analysis, compile best practices and some ideas for programs. In the safety element, and those have been reviewed um by some of the towns committees. So we've gone before the geologic safety committee, the emergency preparedness committee and the sustainability committee. With the memos that are within their um purview or interest area. Um, unfortunately, we couldn't go before the wildfire preparedness committee because they've been having a membership issues, so there was not a quorum to be able to meet. Um, but we did have the emergency preparedness committee look at some of those evacuation materials that are now kind of in their shop. And give some feedback on the um wildfire sections as well. So in terms of upcoming steps, um there'll be a community meeting that will be upcoming. We're still thinking about how we're going to structure that and the timing of that. Um, there'll be more opportunities for those committees to provide feedback, so we're working on the structure of that as well. It'll probably be some kind of joint. Meeting between those bodies or maybe a series of joint meetings. So we're working on those details. Um, and then uh that will be coming before the Planning Commission as well, the safety element. I don't have a timeline, a specific timeline on that yet. We're still working on it. It has um kind of a similar step, but not um exactly the same as the. Safety element has to get sent um to the state to Cal Fire Department of Forestry and they review it. They have a land use planning team. So they'll take a look at our safety element and Woodside Fire Protection District also has a role um in formally reviewing it. They're also um. Participating with us as we're preparing materials. So uh the details of that are still being developed right now in terms of the timing. Um, trying to balance that with the housing element efforts, the number of meetings that we need to have. Um, and trying to schedule it in a way that people can be involved in all of those different steps. So that's what I've got for you on the safety element.
Great, thanks. I see. Next, you have an update on return to in-person meetings?
Um, yes, so for in-person meetings, um the town council has been back for a couple. Um, of in-person meetings that have been hybrid, so they've been happening. Some people are in the schoolhouse and some people are on Zoom. And the equipment's working pretty well and we're kind of ironing out the kinks. Um, so. Now that we know that that's working, um the Planning Commission will be going back into the schoolhouse for um hybrid meetings. Um, we anticipate doing it after the June fifteenth meeting for the housing element. So probably our next sort of regular meeting on a regular topic. Um, we'll go back into the schoolhouse. So we'll be giving you more information about that. Um, but if you haven't had a chance to see a council meeting yet, the schoolhouse acts as a Zoom room. So the people that are in the schoolhouse show in one box and then the cameras automatically turn um to point to the people that are talking. So it's all automated technology. It's pretty neat. It's not perfect. Um, but it's a great way to to capitalize on some of the good parts of having a Zoom meeting and let the public participate from home. Um, if they're not able or, you know. Don't want to come into the schoolhouse and then also let's just go back to in-person um discussion. So so far, we're so good. Um, so we're working out the details and I'll let you know, but I would I would estimate that our first regular meeting, um either. Probably about late this month, probably in July, um we'd be back into the schoolhouse.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, so that's my update on that. Um, I just had one other thing um for the staff update that's not on the specifically. The agenda, and that is the um town council has gone in the direction of doing action minutes. Um, for the council and for the commissions and our committees for the town. So um upon reflection, um that's the preference of, it was discussed with town manager and the town clerk. Um, and thought through, there's some issues with having detailed minutes in terms of having to make corrections to them. And having the legal record not be a transcript, have it be a summary. And sometimes people have found it to be not accurate and there there's been some um issues with that. And it is customary, most places just do action minutes um that that demonstrate. What actions were taken as opposed to the rationale or the thinking that led to the action. So we're going to be transitioning to action minutes. The action minutes will have timestamps um from the Zoom meeting. And we'll be publishing all of the Zoom meetings for Planning Commission and A S C C going forward. So they'll all be on the website. Um, people will be able to watch them there. And then Zoom also has um transcripts that Zoom. Generates just from the voice recognition software that's built in. And so we can also make transcripts available to people if they ask for them, but the transcripts will not be the official minutes of the town. So I wanted to let you know that that's the direction that we're going in.
Okay, uh, to be honest, I'm somewhat disappointed to hear that. I have, when trying to get educated on issues in town. Come to really appreciate the perspectives people have shared. So um. Notwithstanding the fact that I would like to save time reviewing the minutes, um, I do think that's. You know, going to provide less than a fulsome record. Um. If people need to sign up for the Zoom transcript, what's that process going to be like?
Um, it'll just be available if people ask for it. So we still have to figure that out, but it'll just be like we used to in the old days when we were in the schoolhouse and people wanted the recording. They would just email my staff and ask for it and we would send it to them. So I think it'll be like that.
Yeah, I I have a feeling that you'll get some requests, so whatever the process is, it'll be very helpful to understand that. Like before people switch out, before you actually do the full switch.
Thanks, thanks for that.
Thank you.
Do people not um generate their own transcript from the Zoom video?
Maybe.
Um, yeah, I believe, I believe they can. Yeah, I mean, there's lots of different software that can do it.
Okay.
Yeah, but um we, in the, you know, in the middle of all of this during the pandemic time, we realized that there's a um. There's just a toggle in the background on Zoom that we can turn the transcription on. And so now all of our meetings should have the transcription, so we should be able to easily share those with people. I mean, leading, reading a verbatim transcript is awkward. For those of us that don't do it all the time, uh but at least it would be available and anyone who was interested would be able to follow along.
John, I'm assuming by your question that you always maintain a uh transcript in the background.
You're asking me or Laura?
You.
Uh. No, I just assumed that Zoom could, Zoom would have that in there from. Um, and that that might be a quick way for people to get it, but um I don't I don't know. It it certainly could have that, whether or not they do or will do it, I don't know.
Yeah, I believe there's software where if you're watching the video, it can transcribe it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I I would just kind of surprise Zoom itself didn't maintain that as a metadata, but um but maybe not.
Okay, thanks Laura for all those updates. So we'll move to approval of the minutes of our May fourth meeting.
Uh, we do need to take public comments on those staff on the staff reports. Oh, sorry. Okay, let's do that. Uh, let's see, I see five hands up. Uh Rita Combs Whitney.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. You know, in the past two and a half years with all of us kind of being stuck in town and not on our usual. Trips and business trips and vacations or whatever else we're doing in life and being here. Uh, this wonderful community has gotten to really know each other and talk to each other. And so that's one of the side effects of what's been happening. And that is the main reason why we've been participating in all of these meetings in town. But, you know, we have Zoom, it's convenient for us. And, you know, these are really big, important issues that affect, you know, the new people that are coming into our town. Our own personal safety, the value of our homes, you know, the things that we've really invested in, our families, the schools. Everything that we've invested in, and we've been sitting around here for about two and a half years. And so, yeah, we're concerned, and that's why, the main reason why we show up. Uh, if you haven't had a chance, if there's a way to get a document from Judith Murphy. Her report from the Committee of Committees was excellent at that meeting. And there are a lot of committees that have not had opportunity to meet because of um no quorum. Um, because of not being scheduled uh for years or months. But um each person on a committee in town should be sent out individually because then we're not worried about the Brown Act. Uh, Judith Murphy's report so that they can be up to date and make their own personal comments if they can't get together. You know, because of the Brown Act to make their comments, because these are people with really talented skills. That are volunteers in our committee, in our community, and we really appreciate all of you volunteering your time. Now, for the safety element, uh it's too bad that it won't be going in before the housing element. It's really important and it should be incorporated, you know, what is kind of decided on the safety element should be. The lead into where we eventually build housing so that the people that are coming into town or moving around town. Can be safe. We want them to be safe in our community, our our beloved community. And for the um transcripts, please continue doing the detailed transcripts. You know, like everyone's not here for tonight on your group. And, you know, it's really hard to go through the video. You know, eventually it'll get posted to go through the video, but in looking through the minutes, the more detailed minutes, you really get a sense of what was said, who said what. Rather than Joe said something about the, you know, the distance from the curb. It really says what Joe feels when it's more detailed minutes. And it makes it much easier, you know, there's how many people, fourteen attendees out of the forty-three hundred we have in this town. So there are a lot of people and I do talk to a lot of people that actually look for the minutes. And and then they're very frustrated when they go to. You know, online and they don't see meeting minutes from different meetings and then when there's no quorum and there's no meetings and those other. those other meeting minutes are sometimes never posted. And it's a concern for the community. So please, um, I hope we can do more thorough minutes than just the line item minutes. It makes a huge difference. And our property and the property of the people that will be coming into the town is important for all 4,300 members of this community. And we would like the detailed minutes so that we can share that information and it doesn't have to be hearsay, but we can see it in the minutes that are clear. Thank you.
Thanks Rita. Uh, next, uh, seven, five, six, two, is that Caroline?
Yes, indeed, it's Caroline. Thank you, uh, Rita for summarizing this. Um, the reason why we spent our time is really to help you guys because we know that you are concerned and that you represent it. What we have found is that every presentation, and there's a lot of meetings presented by the consultants include information that has nothing to do with Portola Valley. So when you mentioned 1,700 people, you, I would have to remind you that was the only 1,700 people we could reach in one month's time. There's so many people who have no clue what's going on because we don't have access to their data. And we are not a population that really tries to impose on people. We want this to be included as a natural conversation for the community. Yes, we are very disappointed that the safety element was not considered before the housing element. Um, yes, you should listen to Judy Murphy because Judy Murphy really, she nailed, nailed it. She was a listener. She really represents what the people in Portola Valley want. And to find out at the last minute of their last ad hoc housing element, not to consider ADUs was really, um, a, a big disappointment. Um, and then on the committees of committees, we discovered that not all committees are, um, participating. We can discuss this later and we know solutions, we know what's wrong and we have presented the concerns and we have presented solutions to the town council. But if they don't want to implement, sorry, but yes, our general plan was designed to anticipate a change and growth. But every element in that general plan needed to be consulted before we added any housing. So thank you for your concerns and I hope, and, and one more thing, yes, it's very important that we can understand how our town council and committee members come to conclusions. So please don't cut that recording short. We need to understand it ourselves. We've got to know our committee members, our council members and how they come. We don't always agree, but it's very important that we understand what's going on. So thank you for your work and thank you for, yeah.
Nope. Okay, great. Thanks Caroline. Great. Uh, next, Kristy Corley.
Thank you. Um, I also am disappointed that the bike pedestrian traffic and safety committee was not, um, part of the, there were three committees consulted and that was not one of them. And I do think that if we bring housing into, more housing into Portola Valley, that this truly affects bikes and I just was a witness to a bike accident at the entrance of Alpine Swim and Tennis over the weekend. Pedestrians, traffic and safety. So if there's any way to add that committee, uh, to, uh, make comment, I would highly recommend it. I would have thought that the summary today would show once again the locations for the planned housing, the map that has been revised at least three times and shown to the planning commission. Some people will go to the ad hoc housing committee meeting and some people will go to the planning commission meeting. We need to see these maps at both meetings, especially because some of the sites have been dropped off and others have been put on. The other thing I might add is that if you have a description of a site rather than just the address, maybe you could have a picture of the location or label the, the location better than A, B and C. That is not descriptive enough for the public to learn where these locations are. So anytime you can give us more information, more descriptive, we would appreciate it. And thirdly, I would, I think action minutes are shortened minutes and they're not detailed enough. In fact, in some of the summaries of the action minutes, the public who attended, the names are not even there. So not even there, but our comments are not recorded. Only the committee or the commission or comments are recorded. So I find that unfortunate because I do think we have bright, uh, residents that have a lot to say and we want our, our voices heard. And I do hope the recordings are still available. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kristy. Uh, let's see, and last we have David Cardinal.
Hi, thanks. Uh, first of all, I want to say I'm, I'm actually not disappointed. Um, I think you guys do a great job and, uh, the meetings go really well. In particular, as far as the recordings, I think action minutes are fine, writing total minutes, you're never going to get it right. My only technical comment would be to everybody, uh, there's a difference between a professional Zoom account and a free Zoom account. And we use it a lot at Stanford, we use them a lot. Uh, but the ability to generate a transcript is dependent upon the level of your account. So if we want the Zoom transcripts to be available to everyone, I think somebody needs to do the play testing to make sure that however we do that, they can get them, because I don't think a free account can generate them. That's, that's all. Thank you very much.
Great, thanks David. Okay, good. I think that's all the public comments on the staff reports. So now we'll go on to the approval of minutes. So we'll have to really read these carefully since it's one of our last detailed minutes, huh? Any comments from the commissioners?
Yeah. Yep, um, so these range from substantive to, to nitpicky and I'll start with a nitpicky. Um, I think you don't need a semicolon after Vice Chair Golden on the first page. Um, red page 75, second paragraph or first full paragraph during business hours, plural. Um, there is something, oh, and on page, red page 77, it's, uh, one to the third full paragraph. Um, it's saying that I asked if the town staff has reviewed the EIR. Uh, my question had been if you had reviewed drafts of the EIR and commented. So maybe you can adjust that for a sentence, um, in some way to refine the, the question that I asked. Um, there is something, um, lower down the last paragraph, it says Vice Chair Golden inquired how objection to specific mitigations are addressed. That, that might just be a grammar issue, but it, I can't tell if that's and or incorporated into the EIR. Um, if you could just look at that, it might be a minor grammar thing, but it didn't read right. Um, red page 78, first full paragraph. Uh, there are two sentences that should be one. Uh, so there, instead of was not feasible, there probably should be a comma there. Um, or something, because I think she answered. If the applicant announced something was not feasible, probably they have to provide support. So I think that's supposed to be one sentence. Um, further down that page, Commissioner Haskell indicated the night visuals did not include lights on for the building at the intersection. And she asked if there were any comments about light pollution from that structure. I'm not sure that that's accurate. I did point out the night visuals did not seem to be realistic. Um, and I did ask about light pollution. So if you could, you know, go back, this is one of the last full uh, sets of minutes and just see if there's something that can be tightened up there. I, conceptually and directionally, it's okay. Um, and then a couple of paragraphs below that. Commissioner Haskell believe the visual impact. Like three lines down, there is a below probability of specific wildlife being in the area. There's a word missing there. Um, or, you know, a low probability might be what they're thinking. Um, and then I think these are the last ones on red page 79. There's the second full paragraph. I felt the proposed process regarding the removal of trees took away the town's discretion. That's not accurate. I was asking how the interaction between the requirement that the project in order to get approval, uh, needs to comply with policies on removal of trees. Um, and then I, I received an answer and then I probably separately had a comment on it, it doesn't seem to retain the town's discretion, but I was asking a question there and I received a response. So if you could reflect that rather than saying I just had a feeling about it and that's it. Oh, I, I almost lied. On the last page, you have Greg No Last Name appreciated the explanation. Um, I recall that was, it says no last name, so it was Greg Franklin and probably Dana Green, but if, if they literally didn't say their name on the transcript, then you can leave it as is, but just so you know, those were the people that were commenting.
Nicholas, any changes from you?
None. Uh, I recuse myself and, uh, I do work for friends at Stanford.
And Johnny, you didn't have any comments, right?
Correct.
Uh, Laura and Kara, um, it's, um, a big misconception that if you did not attend the meeting, you can't vote on the minutes, but that's not true. Um, both Nicholas and I recused ourselves for this meeting. I have since reviewed the minutes though. I feel like I could approve them. If we have a vote and it's just Judith and John that vote on it, is that good enough or we need a third one?
You need a third person. Um, I think the practice has been to not vote on the minutes if you're recused, but I think you legally can.
I see.
Yeah, so I think it's up to, I think it's up to you to decide whether you would or feel comfortable voting on the minutes.
Okay. I think I do feel comfortable because I've reviewed them and I think basically what the vote says is that I've reviewed and they've, you know, make sense and.
I'll vote on the minutes to the extent that I'm at stake. So I, I think that it gets.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, we need to take public comments right before we vote on them. Okay, great.
Yes, please.
Any comments from the public? This is just on these May 4th minutes, of course. Kristy.
Yeah, I'd just like to see how many people attended, not just those that spoke, but also those that listened. I don't see that anywhere in here, is it?
Um, it's not. It's not the practice of the planning commission to include that information.
I think that's too bad.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Rita Combs Whitney.
Uh, thank you. It's Comis.
Comis, thank you.
Uh, I just want to say with all this discussion about people being recused, yes, if you did not attend the meeting, you don't have to be recused. You just have to review the minutes. But if it's something on the minutes that you are actually being recused on, then you can actually approve the minutes. And so I, I think in this town, we, we should, you know, work on cleaning up the recusals. So moving forward, but, um, I'm patiently waiting to see that happen. Thank you.
I move that we approve the minutes of May 4th with the changes as, uh, suggested along the way.
And I'll second.
Uh, all, or no, do we need to do roll call on this?
Uh, yes, we should. Um, Commissioner Haskell.
Aye.
Commissioner Kirk.
I'm staying.
Uh, Vice Chair Golden.
Aye.
And, uh, Chair Coffstall.
Aye.
Okay.
Time to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn. Craig's not here.
Second. Okay, and I'll be in touch or Laura and I will about the meeting dates, because there might be a special meeting on the, um, Alpine Hills. And there might be a two-part meeting on the June 15th, uh, housing element.
Yeah, so we'll be in touch related to schedules.
Okay, bye everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.